Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's action meeting. First, I have to make an announcement that we met in executive session from 6:30 to 7:15 to discuss matters of personnel. So I guess we'll start first with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberating, and just as for all.
Yeah, I think we're gonna do that again because there is a video which I apologize for.
Well, we'll run that video and then maybe we'll stop it right before the pledge. So why don't we run the video?
Welcome to our regularly scheduled action meeting. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the Audience of Citizens logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the board president may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker.
Okay. Moving on then, we are going to have recognitions and proclamations this evening for the North Penn Odyssey of the Mind teams and for the North Penn Television. So I think first up will be Odyssey of the Mind, is that correct?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Good evening, members of the school board, cabinet members, and Dr. Dietrich. I'm proud to be here tonight as district coordinator of North Penn's Odyssey of the Mind program to acknowledge student achievement. To prepare for competition, students work together to solve a detailed problem. Odyssey of the Mind problems are solved with an eight-minute skit, which is performance-based and might include technical elements, balsa wood structures, or team-created vehicles. Creativity and humor are also essential. Each team performs their skit at a regional tournament and, based upon their scores, can advance to state and world finals. I am proud to note that a North Penn team has advanced to world finals every year since 2010. This season, over 100 students from seven North Penn elementary schools, all three middle schools, and the high school participated in Odyssey of the Mind. Each of our 15 teams was coached by two adult volunteers, at least, and supported by parents that went above and beyond to contribute to the team's success. Tonight, you will meet students from three teams that placed at the OM Regional Competition and advanced to the state tournament. One team, whose students attend Penbrook and North Penn High School, advanced to world finals, competing with teams from the United States, Poland, Mexico, Singapore, China, and South Korea. I will close my remarks with a quote from the founder of Odyssey of the Mind. According to Dr. Sam Miklis, Odyssey of the Mind teaches young people to embrace changes. It instills in youngsters an excitement about learning and an excitement about themselves and their ability to achieve what others might say is impossible. His belief is that for education to be most effective, it must be challenging and that it is important for students to have fun in the process of meeting these challenges. This is Odyssey of the Mind. On behalf of the students and their families, thank you for your continued support of North Penn Odyssey of the Mind, a program that offers a challenging, fun, learning opportunities to the students of our school district. And now I'll announce our team members. The first team is from, the students are from, they represented North Penn High School as a membership, and the students are from North Penn and Penbrook. The first is our only senior tonight. She's Kate Har. She is, she will attend Drexel in the fall, studying in their honors program for film and television. Katie also received from Pennsylvania Odyssey of the Mind the Line Mountain Scholarship. Our next student is Jayden Weed. Kavita Kute. Kyle Har. Greg Sanborn. Lauren Eglin. And Jane Peters. The coaches of the North Penn High School Odyssey of the Mind team are Patty Har and Patty Eglin. Our next team is also competed under the North Penn High School membership, and their students are too, from Penbrook and North Penn High School. Sally Myers. Elise Chang. Elise isn't with us tonight. I mean, Elise Upright. Sorry. This is Viann Chang. Jess Zhao is the next team member. She's not with us tonight. Nicole Chu. The next team member is Natalie Upright. She's not with us either. And Erin Zhu. I am proud to coach this team, since they were in second grade and now they're in ninth and 10th grade. We've been together a while. Okay, our next team is our elementary team from Inglewood Elementary. Logan Parker. Lily Cole. Ryan Navard. Evie Dalton. Mitchell O'Neil. Declan Carroll. And Maddie Han, who is not with us tonight. This coach, or this team is coached by Karen and Gary Navard and Candace Carroll. Once again, thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. Would you mind walking around with the students so that all the administration and board members can shake their hands? Kids, you can just come around behind your coaches. Thank you for all that you do. Appreciate it.
Joy, we should always do it.
Congratulations again, congratulations.
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 And congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations again. Again, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Again, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations again.
Thank you for all that you do. Appreciate it.
Again, congratulations.
Thank you for all that you do. Congratulations.
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 Awesome. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Again, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations again. Okay, congratulations.
Congratulations, sweetie. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
I gave them all to Joanne. She has everything.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So I just want to make the announcement real quick that if you want to view this on a replay, it will be played again on Friday, June 22 at 7:30 p.m., Monday, June 25 at 12:30 and 7:30 p.m., Tuesday, June 26 at 12:30 and 7:30 p.m., and Wednesday, June 27 at 12:30 p.m. And it will be rebroadcast on the Comcast Channel 28 and Verizon FiOS Channel 29. Thank you.
Well done. I wasn't sure if these guys were gonna do the walk-in right, even though they're the props for all year and proclamation, so. Thank you for having here tonight. I'm Bob Gilmer, coordinator of Communications Media for North Penn School District and North Penn Television. Mary Fekish is back in the truck directing the show right now. She is also here with us through the wires. And here, we're here to talk about our crew for North Penn Television. We had won three National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences awards, high school television awards this year. It's up to 21 for us now. It is the high school Emmy. We're not allowed to call it an Emmy. That's kind of like a high school Emmy, but it is from the same group that does the Emmys. And we bring out our seniors each year that we win awards. We don't bring out the whole crew because we still had to have some folks working. So we had a really great year this year. A couple stats, and I was talking to Terry earlier, so I made sure I got my stats out here. We had over 490 programs that North Penn Television created this year, and these folks here had a hand in pretty much every single one of those. If you watch our YouTube channel, when you talk about stats, we had 1.2 million minutes of view this year on our YouTube channel. Basically, it's 100,000 minutes plus a month. It's typical months, like 37,000 views for the content that these guys create. So a lot of great work. We had a stellar year, just a really impressive year. Big events, lots of big productions to do at the high school. And we were recognized for three different areas. We received a total of 10 nominations in, I think it was 14 categories. The best photography for the senior prom. We had a high school television award for, what was the other one? The, oh, the sports program, sorry, Under the Helmet Sports Program. And we won best weekly newscast. There's two categories, there's a daily and a weekly. We do a weekly at the high school. We won best weekly newscast, which is a coveted award to always kind of win the best newscast there. We don't always win that one. That's a tough, really tough category. So really proud of bringing that home, and that's why we're bringing the crew out here today. We're gonna get down to it. We're gonna start first with Anisa Gardizi. She will be attending Emerson this year coming up. She will be studying journalism. It's very critical, Anisa does this right, I'm the first one. Jake Lobarak is next. As I said before, one of his pieces last year on the senior prom was one of the National Student Television Awards. He'll be attending Newman University, studying communications media. Mary Beth Neiman is not here tonight. She is going to Ithaca College to study communications as well. Dan Haynes is here. Superstar Dan Haynes is going to the University of Delaware. He will be studying accounting at the University of Delaware, but he assured me he will keep his roots in communications, and he's looking forward to DJing some programs at the radio station. Not here tonight is Maxi, Maxi, Maddie Oxenreider, who's going to Alabama next year. Mara Slater's not here either. She's going to Marymount Manhattan College to study acting. Henry Strobel is not here. He's one of the anchors on our morning show, and you might have seen him on our North Penn Right Now program, a new show this year. He's going to Duquesne next year to study music education. Kira Crosby is here. She is going to Pace University and will be studying acting as well. Hayden McKay is here. He is going to be attending Millersville University and studying, he's going into the political science direction, so we'll see where he goes from here. Next is Katie Elisi. She's going to Penn State. She is studying political lab, studies, just political lab studies. I was trying to get the exact thing down here. I'm so stuck in TV mode, I was reading studio. Andrew Bozelli is not here tonight. He will be going to Amda, is that correct? We talked very, right? And he's studying acting and music. What else does Amda do? It's like a conservatory he's going to there. Kevin Claxton is not here tonight. He's going to Monco next year. He was part of a group that was leading a new group we had this year for a short film group that we created out of North Penn Television. If you went to our channel today, you saw part one of Nebula 9. It just got finished up. That's on our YouTube channel. Not so sure about part two. We were talking about that. We'll see if it comes out. He's going to Monco next year. Mia Melcher is going to Penn State next year. She's been on air for us as well. And finally is Lauren Wolf. She's going to Rutgers next year, also part of our short film crew as well. Big star of our, one of our short films with Betsy, Betsy the Bike. These are our North Penn Television seniors that are leaving us this year. We were truly gonna miss them. Can you choke up a little bit? Don't look at me! Just a great job. Great group of kids here. Really excited to see what they do when they go to college. North Penn Television.
Congratulations. Thank you, and we really appreciate all the work you guys do for us here at the board meetings as well. So Mr. Gilmer, would you like to walk through with the students?
Sure.
So all the administration and staff can, or board members can shake your hands. Good luck.
Thank you.
Yes, congratulations. Have fun at Penn State. That's where I went. It's a great school. Congratulations to you. All right, that's always a fun part of our program. So now, moving on to Audience of Citizens. If anyone would like to make public comment. Just like to let people know that this meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the Audience of Citizens logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. Due to the length of the agenda this evening, we are asking that comments be limited to three minutes or less, please. And to allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the board president may ask an individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker, so.
Hi, my name is Lynette Velez McKnight. I live in Lansdale. My address will be on here. I don't think everybody needs to know my address, but I live in Lansdale. I have children in the North Penn School District in multiple schools. I have elementary school children. And I'm here as a witness to a lot of my friends for some of the concerns that have been raised at Walton Farm. As you know, the Walton Farm, some of you might know, may not know, there have been a lot of concerns in the past three years of some incidents that have been considerably taking more, harder escalating in force throughout the school system at Walton Farm. So I want to read a couple things that I wrote, that way I can speed it up for you guys. The Walton Farm School Administration is well aware of the issues being faced by the children attending the school. We're here as concerned parents that have children that have been physically and mentally abused at Walton Farm. Some of us are witnesses, while others are living this nightmare in skin and bone, suffering, struggling, supporting and fighting for our children's right to a free, safe, and wholesome education within the North Penn School District. Physical and mental abuse being done by children, to children, lack of disciplinary action from staff, in particular, the principal, lack of acknowledgement where serious issues are being created, and excused for poor behavior, i.e. physical violence, bullying, offensive language, et cetera, set of children attacking staff and other children within the school, not addressing the victims, but instead victimizing them, and making comments such as, "They were just playing a game. It was an accident." Lack of support by the staff at Walton Farm, in particular, the principal, in children experiencing mental health issues, physical issues, anxiety, depression, and the list goes on. When parents ask the principal point-blank, "What is the protocol when a child behaves as such? Disruption of class, physical violence against a staff member or another student, bullying, and repeated escalated offenses?" Such principle, Mr. Mark Osslyn, could not answer the question. His answer at multiple points was, "We cannot go into detail because that concerns a child," even though it was a point-blank ax, question on the protocol, procedure, and details on specific violences occurring at Walton Farm, not specifying any children at the moment. We are respectfully requesting this board to provide us the following by August 12, with the calendar that is sent to all parents here. A copy of the policies in place, so all families are aware of the policies and procedures available within Walton Farm on when things get out of control. And believe me, they have gone out of control, and this is not the first year. It is the worst year. It's been three years in the making. Action plan on how Walton Farm, yes?
Mrs. McKnight, I'm sorry, I know what you're speaking of is very important, but you've hit the three-minute mark.
I'm sorry, but I'm almost done.
Can you wrap it up?
Okay.
Okay?
Yep. Thank you. Action plan on how Walton Farm plans to address the response to violence. Detailed plan on training and educating the children to help and support non-typical students. Documentation for the 2017 and 2018 school year safety school report that currently says for the past three years, we have had zero incidents, which is a lie. This screams to me and to a lot of us parents, concerned parents, as negligence from the principal, who is required by law to accurately and responsibly record those incidents to the state. District policy on safety, disciplinary action and enforcement. Provide parents with school district issued school climate survey to complete. And address how parents who have taken their children out of the school because of lack of support of the board, the principal, and the school district. I'm sorry, I'm almost done. I'm also a taxpayer. I'm almost done.
Ma'am, we've analyzed, ma'am, at this time, we're gonna ask you to put the remaining comments in an email to the board and to circulate it.
Oh, no, I have it here for you to take, actually. I print them out. Lastly, and most importantly, we would like to address today what your zero tolerance policy is.
Excuse me, ma'am. You have exhausted your available time.
That's fine. Here, I will provide you the documentation.
Thank you.
By the way, I have contacted an attorney. Well, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Oh, I also contacted NBC News. They're here today. Thank you.
I'm sorry, just to be fair to everybody.
That's fine.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, honey. Here you go, sweetheart. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Qualick. I live at 121 Gwendolay Drive in North Wales. I'm here today to discuss class sizes for the incoming fourth grade at Gwendore. The parents were made aware of the reduction in classrooms in a letter sent home with the students from the principal. With this reduction of four teachers to three, the students will be in classrooms of 27 to 28 students. This will be a dramatic increase of approximately 38% from the 19 to 21 students per classroom that they had in third grade. The two topics I want to touch on are departmentalization and inclusion. First, departmentalization. Based on the letter that we received, there will be three classrooms, one teacher teaching ELA, one teaching social studies, science, health, and ELA, and one teacher teaching social studies, science, health, and math. The letter then goes on to discuss departmentalization. I'm gonna read from the letter we received. Traditionally, teachers at the elementary level teach all content areas. In departmentalization structure, a teacher will instruct in a few subject areas, allowing him or her to become specialized in a particular content area. There are many reasons why North Penn and other districts around the country have moved to this model. These are the following. The PA Core standards require students to think and learn more deeply. Departmentalization allows teachers to build their expertise in their assigned content area. Differentiated training can be offered to support teachers in these subjects where they can collaborate and explore instructional strategies aligned to their content and depth. Pennsylvania has recently changed their certification process. Teachers in grades four through six are now required to become certified in a specific subject area rather than certified in general content in grades four through six. Therefore, a departmentalized approach is more aligned with the new certification requirements. Based on the reasoning behind the departmentalization, having two teachers teach two subjects does not align with the departmentalization structure. I believe that departmentalization is a wonderful structure as the teachers can focus on one subject and become specialized in that area. For departmentalization to work properly, you would need four teachers in the fourth grade. The second subject was inclusion. Based on the current policy, 6151, grades four through six classroom guideline is 25 to 29 students. This was last revised in March 2011. Since this revision, North Penn has moved to full inclusion of students with special needs and disabilities of all kinds. Our hope is that the district will implement a revised guideline that is consistent with the current educational landscape. Smaller class sizes lead to more one-on-one attention and instruction, foster deeper student-teacher relationships, provide an environment more suitable for small-group work and differentiated instruction, and ultimately enhance the overall learning experience of the students. There are many concerns that have been brought to my attention with full inclusion in classrooms of this size. With inclusion comes many meetings with teachers needing to be pulled out. It seems there is a lot more academic and behavioral needs with these stu, with students. With so many students, it's difficult for the teacher to give enough attention to the students' needs, and physical space is limited with classrooms of these sizes. And middle-of-the-road students are not being challenged. Unfortunately, there are no laws specifically protecting the needs of average students. It is simply not reasonable to place teachers in situations where they are stretched so thin to meet the competing needs of the challenges in their classroom. They are unable to provide adequate one-on-one guidance to the children that do not have legal documentation ensuring their right to get it.
Mrs. Quinnlock?
Please.
I'm sorry.
I'm closing.
You hit the three-minute mark, okay.
Please consider adding a fourth teacher to fourth grade at Gwendore. Please think of the students and the teachers and how everyone benefits from having smaller classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Jenna.
Hi, my name is Jenna Price. I live in Haffield, Pennsylvania. I have twins that go to Walton Farm Elementary, and they've recently finished their fifth-grade year. Both of my students this year, I'm sorry. Both of my daughters this year were bullied. The school did nothing. A student threatened to choke my child. A student threatened to choke my child and to kill my child, and the school gave her one-day suspension. After the threats were made and she was suspended for one day, she came back and attacked my daughter again. Nothing was done. This girl is a criminal. We had a meeting on several occasions. I contacted the school February 27th, and I sent the threat to Mr. Goslin, Dr. Dietrich, and Dr. Santoro. Nothing happened. I again sent an email on February 28th, at which time I got a response that said, from Mr. Goslin, it said, "Thank you for sharing these screenshots. I take this matter very seriously, and I will contact you tomorrow." He never contacted me. I again went to the school on May- on March 5th. He told me he was very concerned about the actions of this girl after her suspension because she was continuing to threaten and harass my children. Clearly, he wasn't too concerned because he never contacted me again or had any action taken against the student. As the violence and bullying continued, we finally had a meeting with the teachers, the guidance counselor, and the parents on April 3rd. Again, Mr. Goslin couldn't find the time to attend. There was an officer from Towmanston that also attended the meeting. At the meeting, he informed the staff that this girl's actions were criminal, but again, no action was taken. On April 13th, I had a phone conversation with Mr. Goslin as the situation continued to deteriorate. During this conversation, he said to me that it's his experience that a student ju- doesn't just threaten another one unprovoked, and that my daughter must have done something. Seriously, what could a child do to justify threats of physical violence and death? When he asked what I would like to see happen, I told him I would like to see this child removed from the school. He declined sa- such action, saying that every child in America has the right to a free public education. I was floored. Yes, every child has the right to a free education. However, they waive that right when they engage in criminal behavior. Remember, the people in prison, they all had rights too until they engaged in criminal behavior. He told me that he could remove my daughter from the classroom, my one daughter from the classroom that this student was in. Why should my daughter be punished for another student's actions? Dr. Santoro was at a meeting with us, and she did say that this student is not to be in class with my children next year. However, they will still be together throughout the day, at lunch, recess, before school, and after school. In May, the same student attacked my other child. Just so you know, my other child is in a protected class. She is very petite. At 11 years old, she weighs barely 50 pounds and is not even four feet tall. She came after my daughter, destroyed her personal property, cornered her in the bathroom about comments that my sister had made about her sister saying, you know, "Why did your sister tell on me and send screenshots and everything?" Cornered my child in the bathroom. When she was confronted again about-
Jenna, I'm sorry. You've passed the three-minute mark, so can you?
One last thing.
All right, thanks.
Okay. When this child was suspended for the one day, according to the school policy, it says that there is supposed to be a board meeting. That the principal is supposed to contact the board, and there's supposed to be a proper hearing, after which time further disciplinary action can be taken if needed. But I don't think there was ever a meeting. As a board, you need to do better. As educators, you need to do better. And as a district, we need to do better because my kids deserve it.
Thank you, Mrs. Price. Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment?
Yes, hi. My name is Mrs. Nichols, and I reside in Hatfield with my two young sons under five. And the topic of discussion for myself tonight is the kindergarten cutoff date, which is September 1st.
Before you go any further, can I just have you write in anything?
Sure.
And can you stop the clock, I guess, till? Thanks. If you don't sign it, you'll forget and walk away. Everybody does, so. Thank you.
Yeah, so my eldest son, he, his birthday is September 10th, so he's literally 70s past the cutoff. And I would like to have him enter the school district next year, but I contacted the office, and they said it's a hard cutoff date. And I didn't know if there was any way that he could test into the program because he's been in a structured environment since he was 18 months old. So I'd really prefer not to put him into a private kindergarten and get him into a public school after that. I'd prefer to, you know, start him out with, with his counterparts and friends in the kindergarten and go from there. So that's really all I have for tonight, and hopefully you can be open to possibly doing some kind of testing into the program for 2019. And also, just a general comment on maybe a full-day kindergarten as opposed to a half-day. That would be a lot easier for working professionals, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Kristy Sacker. I live in Hatfield, Pennsylvania. And I'm also here regarding some of the incidents at Walton Farm. My son unfortunately was a victim to some of the things that have were mentioned tonight. My son was a fourth grader at, um, this past year. We did have to remove him in January due to some of the severe issues and him pretty much becoming the scapegoat of fourth grade, if not the entire school. And I'm not here to say my son's perfect because he's not, but there were just some incidents that occurred that should not, never have happened, and things should have been nipped in the bud long before that. So I'll, I'll start with, I think probably the final straw for us that happened at Walton Farm this year. November 17th, first thing in the morning, my son got on the bus, where the last bus stop before getting to Walton Farm. I received a call immediately after he got to the school from Mark Goslin, saying I needed to pick up my son from school immediately. And he was being suspended for about two days for an altercation on the bus. I was bewildered, so I rushed up to the school. I picked him up and brought him home from school, wondering what happened, and only being told by Mark that he was told, Mark was told by the children on the bus, that my son had started it. However, my son was in te- I'm sorry, in tears, saying he was attacked. Mark said he would be doing an investigation, pull the surveillance tapes from the bus, and I said I'd also like to see those tapes when appropriate. So Monday morning, we waited all through the weekend. I called. I think I emailed Mark, and I said, you know, "What's going on? Can my son return to school?" He said after reviewing the tapes, "My son was not at fault, and he could return to school." We had a meeting. I met with Mark, his teacher, the guidance counselor, Janelle DeLassio, to watch the tape. Janelle slid a box of tissues across the table to me and said, "You're going to need these." My son is only on the bus for seven minutes before getting to Walton Farm. In those seven minutes, I witnessed nothing short of a prison riot. He was brutally attacked by two students unprovoked on the bus. The child in the seat forced himself on him, pushing him down in the seat, while another child across the aisle bicycle kicked my son in the head and body. The child in the seat eventually had him face down on the floor in the aisle, pressing his head into the floor with my son's arms pinned behind his back. As this got worse, the entire back of the bus stood up to watch the show, and nobody did nothing, did anything, or to alert the driver. When my son was finally let off off the bus, I watched the tapes as the other children came running up to the bus driver telling my son, telling her that my son had started it. I also watched the bus driver, who saw none of this, not once looked up in her mirror during this whole seven minutes to see what was going on in the bus, berate my son in front of the entire bus and tell him he should know better because he's a fourth grader. It was not only that, but the rest of the bus was in complete chaos. Other kids were beaten on each other for the entire seven minutes that I saw. Nothing was done during this time. Mark told me he had been monitoring this bus for a while, so why wasn't anything done? It's the end of the school year, and every day since then, I have watched this bus driver. I pass her every day on my way home from work. She's still driving bus 139 for the district. And I hear this bus is complete chaos. And as a result, our route was changed. We got a different bus in our neighborhood, but that doesn't really solve the problem. My son was also apologized.
Mrs. Sacker?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
If you pass the three-minute mark, so if you could-
Yeah, two seconds.
Thank you.
My son, all he wanted out of this was an apology from Mark, and he never got it. One other point, my son received a note in his desk earlier this year to kill himself. And I've also asked the teachers, "What's the procedure for incidents?" And they said they don't know. They have to go to Mark whenever something happens in the classroom. That seems utterly ridiculous. The teachers can't make those decisions. So the good thing is, my son is in a better place, at a better school. But unfortunately, at this time, we are not returning back to Walton Farm for the fifth-grade year. We, we can't. It's not safe. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, I've met many of you at board meetings or at special meetings. My name is Donna Kaler. I'm Hatfield, PA. I have three sons. They're entering third, fifth, and sixth grade at Walton Farm this fall. I'm here tonight to show the impact one bully in our school had on our family for the entire school year. On September 8th, my fourth grader was choked on the school bus. One hand of the bully was squeezing his neck while the other hand of the bully was pulling on his shirt. How do we know this? The bus video angle that my husband and I were shown showed nothing but heads, but my fifth-grade son at the time and our neighbor witnessed the whole thing along with another fourth grader. We asked for interviews to be done. They were not done until two weeks later. My neighbor nor my other son were even asked to just give a statement of documentation. This incident was unprovoked, but the principal insinuated that because my son did not want this child to sit in the seat with him, that this action was the result of that. We saw in the video the bully skipped three-quarters of the seats on the bus to sit with my son. This dynamics actually had started that day on the playground when the bully was picking on other children during a game, and my son, in an attempt to stick up for his friends, told the child to shut up and just let's play the game before recess was over. So the punishment was laying right there in front of everybody. We had multiple instances. I'm trying to skip for the time. So we had multiple instances going on for six weeks. This child was also permitted to participate in extracurricular activities such as chimes and chorus. During those times, my son was in chimes. He was taunted, victimized weekly, called the F-word, was told he was a failure. He didn't belong there. It got to the point where our, our oldest son would let us know that he would be crying and come to him at the lunch table because he was just, he didn't know what to do with himself. He begged us at this point to homeschool in October. He also was raising concerns to my husband and I because of his grades, and he began not sleeping at night. And then his brothers also were very worried because he was no longer the happy smiling, and he's the goofy one being in the middle of the three boys, and that was gone. We had meetings with the guidance counselor and the staff, and the one meeting that we really needed the principal at, he was not available due to a district meeting that required his attendance. But this meeting he scheduled with us was approximately 10 days prior to that. So he was aware of where he needed to be. We had attempted that day to go over the prob- the problem behavior flow chart of the minor versus major infractions. They discussed how to empower our son. But mind you, the steps the staff had been working through with the bully, which us students and parents may not be seeing, were not showing any positive changes either. And the word resilience constantly comes up, but how much resilience can a nine-to-10-year-old child have? Sorry. We had a break for about 20 days between November and December when I put a stop to meetings that were happening between my son and the bully in the counselor's office.
Mrs. Kaler?
Yes.
I'm sorry, you've hit the-
Okay. It came to the point where my son talked about ending his life and to the point where we needed to take him out of school. We went to a SAP referral through the school, and at that time, they recommended filing complaint with the state. They said that what was happening to our son and the other children was a form of child abuse. They told us not to allow our child to be in the room with the principal one-to-one, that we either need to be on a conference call or physically there if there was any issues or concerns. So we pulled him out. He has a separate therapist. We are working on reintegration. At the meeting, the principal took a backseat, and the reading ther- uh, reading specialist was the leader. Did not give my husband and I the confidence to bring our child that we've been working and putting through therapy sessions to put him back in this scenario. I've expressed my concerns, and we're praying for the best, but we really feel like we really need the support of the staff to step up now and do something to make a difference, a positive difference. Thank you.
Thank you for coming up and sharing it.
Hello, my name is Dottie Diamato. My son is also going into fifth grade. He should be going to Walton Farm, although that's still up in the air at this time. I can say that my son has experienced all of the above. It started in third grade. Unfortunately, his bully is the same bully, third grade and fourth grade. It was physical. It wasn't verbal, although that did happen too. He was pushed from the playground, broke his wrist. He was kicked in the stomach with the wind knocked out of him. He was going to ignore it because he was told that that child had anger issues. This is a big problem at Walton Farm. Mr. Goslin is the principal. He is not a psychologist, but for some reason, he can diagnose a child with anger issues and label them that way. It's not an excuse for bad behavior. Our son has always been described as kind, loving, funny, outgoing, intelligent, respectful. What we're left now with is a child that doesn't want to leave the house. We pulled him out of Walton Farm because since the Christmas break, he's been experiencing severe stomach issues. This year alone, I've put through every incident that has happened. It went to the teacher, to the principal. I've talked to Dr. Santoro. We met in February with Dr. Dietrich, Dr. Santoro, and Dr. Ruffo to explain our concerns. Thirty parents showed up. Thirty parents explained the issues that have been going on at Walton Farm. They have gotten somewhat better because they've removed some of the students, or actually, no, they didn't remove some of the students. They suggested that the parents remove, which means that they can come back to school. Okay? What this means to us is, if we are able to get our son back to Walton Farm next year, which we still don't know. We have two therapists coming to our house every week to work with our son to knock down the wall that he has built up around himself because he has anxiety, which he has never had before. Mr. Goslin does not address the issues. He talks around them. This is not part of inclusion. Okay? These children need to have consequences for their behavior. Children who are victimized need to see that the pa- the children that are victimi- that are causing them this pain have consequences. They'll learn, and our children will feel safe. We are asking you to put through a policy, a written policy, that we as parents can bring to the principal. No, they violated this, okay? This is what should happen. No more talking around it, no more pulling it out of his pocket and saying, "This is what happens." Okay? Resilience is another thing. Okay? After all of this started to happen with my son and the Kaler son, okay, they started to have talks with the children. Resilience. Okay? It was kind of suggested that our child would benefit from resilience, which I agree. And he had that resilience in third grade. When it got to be too much for him to handle in fourth grade, it, it was just too much. He broke, okay? I would like to see him back in Walton Farm, but I need to know that we are going to have the leadership that all of our children can go to as a first line of defense, not somebody that tells the victim, "You could have handled it differently." Or he did that because he has anger issues. I know that I'm past my time. I had a 10-minute speech. I narrowed it down because everybody covered the same issues. We do not have a leader at Walton Farm that we can trust to send our children to. Okay? He is not- He is not a person that we feel confident talking to. Our children don't feel safe. Just as closing, I'd like to, I'll leave this with you. But on www.safeschools.state.paa.us, okay? All schools are required to submit incidents to the Department of Education. Okay? If I could be allowed to just, okay? I have taken North Penn School District as a whole, NAP, York, and Walton Farm, just as a summary to show what has happened.
Okay.
Okay? In 2011, 2012, North Penn School District...
I'm sorry, I thought you were going to give it to me.
Well, I can do that, but I would like to show that since Mark Goslin has been principal, zero incidents have been filed with the state, zero. Okay? I know for a fact, last year alone, okay? I was witness to and my son was subjected to at least five.
Can you email us that information?
I sure can, I have everything on email, I have it on Word and I can absolutely, and I can also leave it with you at this time.
Okay, thank you, Ms. DiAmato.
The rest of the information.
Okay, do you have...
Hi there, my name is Leslie Denapoli. I live in North Wales and my children attend Pembroke and Guadnora Elementary. I'm calling, actually, I'm coming here to say thank you. The North Penn School District, in a big-picture perspective, you always hear about Parkland and the schools with their shootings and it's like, what could we have done? What could we have done? We could have flagged these kids. And I'm here to say thank you to the board for renewing a contract with Lakeside Education, who, they are a support group that comes into, right now, mainly the junior high and high schools. So we all have the guidance counselors that are there for the children, but when the children need a little bit of extra something special, Lakeside is there for one-on-one counseling, group counseling, weekly, bi-weekly. So I want to say thank you to the district for renewing that contract for next year. On a personal note, my family has directly benefited from that at Pembroke Elementary School and I'm here to commend Principal Galante, Vice President, Vice Principal Kitchman, Jessie Clancy, the guidance counselor, and the teachers that are part of my daughter's program because I always say that life's a three, school is a three-legged stool. You have the teachers, you have the parents, and you have the students. And I always said it's three legs, but now I'm adding a fourth because the support systems that have been there for my child and overall were ahead of the game. And I want to say thank you for acknowledging all of that and renewing the contract as well. Thank you. I think it is part of, it's coming through, the elementary as well, from what I understand. I see Dr. Holman nodding her name? Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Denapoli.
Hi, I'm Bob Kaler. I live on Suplee Circle in Hatfield. I have three children that go to Walton Farm. My wife just spoke and I feel we are not being heard. We've spoken with the principal and the teachers at Walton Farm. When we spoke with the teachers alone about these issues that happened to my son, we asked them, "What is our next step?" Because we are not getting through. And when the teachers are nodding their heads saying, "You have the right to go to the state or the board," they're asking us to come to you for help. That's what they're asking for because they're not getting heard. Put yourselves in our shoes. My son comes to me after being bullied for several months and he says to me, "Dad, the only way this bullying is going to stop is if I go to heaven." Put yourselves in my shoes. We took my son out of school and he has been in cyber school. We're trying to get him back into Walton Farm. I don't feel safe putting him back in that school at all and I have three children in that school. So please, think about that going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Kaler. Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment? No? Okay. All right, we're going to move on then with the rest of the agenda. First up will be approval of the minutes from the May 17, 2018 action meeting.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Diazio, seconded by Ms. Ramich. Do I have any comments or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on then to the committee reports. First up will be Safe Schools. Mr. Casa? No worries. Do you want me to skip to finance and we'll come back to...
Sorry, I was too busy writing with an old pen and paper, so, yes, thank you.
All right.
I'm ready, thank you. Madam President, the Safe Schools Committee met on May 24, 2018. Mr. Dar gave an update on the behavioral threat assessment process. Responses from consultants are received and are under review. An update was provided on the May 14 training session for our building emergency response teams. Committee also reviewed the security plan for the high school commencement ceremonies. Committee discussed a district-wide climate survey along with additional security enhancements. Committee reviewed the summer meeting schedule and the next Safe Schools Committee meeting is going to be held on Tuesday, July 24, 2018 at 6:00 PM at the ESC. Actually, that, you know, we'll strike that. The next Safe Schools Committee will not be held on Tuesday, July 24, 2018. We will have meetings as necessary for any decisions and the next meeting will be in August. I'd also like to add that as part of the Safe Schools Committee, we discussed, we discussed additional support staff and policies as well, when it came down to the behavioral threat management and assessment. And as of the last meeting, we expect to proceed in the new year, I mean, in the new academic year with a program in the elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Casa. Finance. Mr. Diazio.
Thank you. The committee met on May 29, 2018. The monthly financial reports and budget transferred were reviewed and the committee discussed the following items. New student information software. Dr. Landis and Mrs. Rantz reviewed the selection process for the new student information system. Infinite Campus is the recommended vendor and funds have been allocated in the budget for 2018, 2019. The committee discussed the cultural proficiency budget. Dr. Holman reviewed the items that are already included in the 1819 budget and discussed additional items that could be considered in the future. Committee also discussed the 1819 enterprise fund budgets. Presentations were made on the community education, aquatics, extended care, and school nutrition services budgets. There will be no increase in lunch prices for the fourth straight year for next year. We discussed the homestead exemptions. The homestead exemption for qualified properties for 1819 will be $211.77, which is an increase of $3 over the current year. Next was the real estate tax installment payment plan. The district is required by law to offer an installment payment plan for all properties, property owners for that matter. The district offers three installments with payments due no later than October 31 of each year. Next up, due to the resignation of Carol Pitts, a new school board treasurer needs to be appointed. Donna McGrower, interim Assistant Director of Business Administration, is being recommended for that position. Next up was the 1819 property insurance renewal. The lines of coverage and premiums for the upcoming school year were discussed. And finally, professional services, RFP policy. A draft policy to address periodic RFPs for professional services will be presented in the near future. Items recommended for the action meeting and those items that are on tonight's agenda are the budget transfers for April 2018, approval of the contract for the new student information software, the 2018-2019 enterprise budget funds, business office operational items, the 1819 homestead exemption, the 2018 real estate tax installment payment plan, the appointment of a new school board treasurer, and the renewal of all of our insurance for 1819. The next committee meeting will be held in August at this point. Do we have a date on that, Mr. Skrocky, for the August meeting? Is it the 25th?
One second, I believe it is the 27th of August.
27th of August at 6:30.
Correct.
Here in the ESC. End of report.
Thank you. Moving on to personnel, which I don't have a date. Personnel met to discuss matters of personnel negotiations and potential litigation. I don't believe we're having a July meeting, so we will also be meeting in August. Support Services, Mr. Casa?
Yes, Support Services Committee met on May 29, 2018. Mr. Kennedy presented a credit change order for the Oak Park Elementary School HVAC product, project. The committee also reviewed several change orders for the Montgomery Elementary School renovation project. The committee then reviewed the bid results for the following services: chiller maintenance, fire extinguisher service, asphalt repairs, boiler cleaning, concrete repairs, pavement line striping, grass cutting. The June Support Services meeting has been canceled. The next Support Services Committee meeting is tentatively scheduled for Monday, July 30, 2018 at 6:00 PM here at the ESC. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Casa. Education, Community, and Policy, Mr. Fusco.
Thank you. The ECP Committee met on Thursday, May 24 and Tuesday, June 19. At the meeting in May, the committee reviewed an action item concerning the 2018 summer school programs for grade 7 and 8, program for 7 and 8. The program will be a hybrid model that will combine 44 hours of classroom instruction plus a minimum of 11 hours of online instruction. Their curriculum will follow the challenge modules developed through First LEGO League. These modules will allow students to develop soft skills such as teamwork, communication, problem-solving, time management, and learning to develop leadership qualities. The specific subjects to be taught will be English 7 and 8, pre-algebra 7, algebraic concepts, algebraic operation and equations, life science, earth and space science, world cultures, geography, and American history 1. On June 19, the committee reviewed two policies. Board Policy 5115, bullying was reviewed and found to be in compliance with all requirements of the law. Board Policy 5146, administration of medication to students, was rewritten and reviewed by the district solicitor. Also, a few informational topics were presented at the May 24 meeting. Three North Penn High School students and their teachers provided insights into the AP Capstone Program at the high school. This program is comprised of AP Seminar and AP Research. The courses focus on research, writing, argument, and drawing conclusions from evidence. With a score of three or better in these two courses, plus four additional AP courses, a student earns an AP Capstone diploma. Changes to the current cellphone regulations were discussed. At the middle schools and North Bridge, phones are to be turned off and not be visible. In addition, students may not use earbuds. At the high school, the current practice will continue with a couple of changes. Only one earbud will be permitted and headphones covering the ears will not be allowed. Information about the proposed student information system that is to be installed and piloted in early 2019 for full implementation in 2019, 2020 was shared with the committee. Infinite Campus, the selected system integrates all components, student information, special education, gradebook, student scheduling, student registration, and parent-student portal, and provides real-time data flow and enhanced data integrity. The cost for this system is lower than the amount that was budgeted for the purchase of a system. The next ECP meeting will be Tuesday, August 28 at 6:30. There will not be a meeting in July. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Fusco. No, it's not public comment, so... At the end of the meeting, we'll have, we can have public comment again though, okay? All right. North Monco Technical Career Center, Mr. Diazio.
All right. The Joint Operating Committee met earlier this week. We met on June 18. Besides our regular business items, we approved Dr. Frank Gallagher to serve as the Superintendent of Record for the 2018-2019 school year. This will be Dr. Gallagher's second year in that position. And we also approved a collective bargaining agreement between the North Monco Education Association and the Joint Operating Committee. And just for what it's worth, we're having a fantastic year at North Monco. We had a very easy budget cycle, we cruised right through the budget cycle, we had a lot of trends break in our favor. We're probably in stronger financial position there than we've ever been in the past and with the new leadership at North Monco, things are really looking up there and I'm excited to see everything that happens in the future. I'm hoping that sometime in the fall, Gina, the new executive director, will be here for one of our board meetings to introduce herself and to talk about the programs that are offered at North Monco and how we can help promote them to our students. We are not meeting in June again or in July. We will meet again in August on August 20. Thank you. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Diazio. I look forward to meeting Gina. Montgomery County Intermediate Unit, I believe that's you, Mrs. Ramich, right?
Yes. So the MCIU met on May 23 and the meeting mostly consisted of honoring retirees from the MCIU and the next meeting will be on June 27. End of report.
Thank you. North Penn Educational Foundation, Ms. Ott.
The foundation last met on June 6 at the ESC. I'm happy to report that our treasurer, Mr. Jack Hoy, who's a local accountant, reviewed our financials for the year and commented that the foundation had its best year yet in terms of revenues and our long-term investments are stronger than ever. Our annual revenue from an outside accounting firm will occur over, I'm sorry, annual review from an outside accounting firm will occur over the next couple of months. We're currently planning our annual golf outing being held August 13 at Pine Crest Golf Course. We're looking for both sponsors and golfers and opportunities range from a whole sponsor at $100 to a major sponsor at $3,000. This year's theme is golf for education and will also serve as the culminating event for a summer-long backpack and school supply drive, for which I also have an update. The foundation and MPSD are teaming up with the Chamber of Commerce of Greater Montgomery County and its community health and youth foundation to collect student backpacks and supplies for needy students in the school district for the 2018-2019 school year. This strategic partnership will help us meet our goal of 250 filled backpacks. Information on what is needed, where community members can drop off supplies, and how local businesses can become donation sites can be found on our website. There's also a donation bin here at the ESC and we're taking monetary donations as well. Finally, the trustees approved the awarding of 36 grants for the 2018-2019 school year, totaling $28,912. These innovative projects span a wide array of curriculums and grade levels. I look forward to telling you all about some of these grants, the teachers who took the initiative to propose them, and the students who are benefiting from the projects this fall. Our next meeting will be Wednesday, August 1 and if you have any questions about the foundation, you can contact Christine Liberowski at the ESC.
Thank you, Ms. Ott. All right, moving on then to the superintendent's report, Dr. Dietrich.
Thank you. I recommend approval of settlement agreements for the students as listed.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Prokowsky, seconded by Mr. Fusco. Do we have any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of alternative placements for those listed and copies are on file in the Office of Special Education.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Prokowsky, seconded by Ms. G. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of expulsion for student 0621186, whose name is on file in the office of the superintendent. The student's parents' guardians have waived their right to an expulsion hearing.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mrs. Prokowsky. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the gifts to the district as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Diazio, seconded by Mrs. Ramich. Do we have any comments or questions, Ms. Ott?
Thank you, as always.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of additions and changes to the extra duty assignments for the 2017-18 school year, subject to the execution of the extra duty services contract. school year, subject to the execution of the extra duty services contract.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mrs. Ramich. Do we have any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the final budget resolution in the amount of $260,247,826 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, per the attached.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Motion by Mr. D'Azio, I mean, Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mr. Casa. Do we have any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Pose.
Nay.
Mr. Scrocky, would you like to take a roll call?
Certainly. Okay, this vote is for the 2018-19 general fund budget. We have a motion and a second, so the vote will go as follows. Mr. Fusco?
Aye.
Mr. Casa?
Aye.
Mrs. Prokowsky?
Nay.
Mrs. G?
Aye.
Ms. Ott?
Nay.
Mrs. Ramich?
Nay.
Ms. McBean?
Aye.
Mr. D'Azio?
No.
Mrs. Stolt?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-4.
Thank you.
Recommend approval of the contracts as listed for June 21, 2018.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded, was that you, by Mrs. Prokowsky. Any comments or questions?
One question. The, Dr. Holman, on the Carnegie Learning, is that a continuation?
Yes.
Of our existing?
That is correct.
What we're doing currently?
Yes, that is correct. That's to pay for, I believe, one more workshop for next year.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I've lost my place here. So, any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the personnel items as listed.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Prokowsky, seconded by Mr. D'Azio. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Having been nominated by the superintendent of schools, I recommend the election of Dr. Jenna Mancini-Ruffo as assistant superintendent for a term of three years, effective July 15, 2018, and the approval of the appointment agreement with Dr. Ruffo, a copy of which is on file in the Office of the Director of Business Administration.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mr. Fusco. Do we have any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Dr. Ruffo.
Congratulations, Dr. Ruffo.
Having been nominated by the superintendent of schools, I recommend the election of Dr. Todd M. Bauer as assistant superintendent for a term of three years, effective July 15, 2018, and the approval of the appointment agreement with Dr. Bauer, a copy of which is on file in the Office of Director of Business Administration.
So moved.
So moved by everybody. Okay. Motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Ms. Ott. Do we have any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Dr. Bauer. We are looking forward to working with both of you.
Recommend approval of extra duty assignments for the 2018-19 school year, subject to the execution of extra duty services contract.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mrs. Ramich. Do I have any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next item is in regard to various bids. We reject all, we recommend that we reject all bids for chiller maintenance. We award a contract to Keystone Fire Protection for fire extinguisher service in the amount of $4,791. We award a contract to Driveway Concepts, Kowalewski-Wilson Construction, and Goricon Incorporated for asphalt paving repairs based on unit prices. Award a contract to Combustion Mechanical Services for boiler cleaning in the amount of $17,500. Award a contract to De Palantino and Driveway Concepts for concrete repairs based on unit prices. Award a contract to De Palantino Contractors, WGC Incorporated, and Star Stripping Service for pavement line striping based on unit prices. And award a contract to M&amp;M Landscaping for grass cutting services at Bridle Path, Winor, Knapp, Colt, Montgomery, North Bridge, North Wales, and Oak Park in the amount of $39,367.38.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Prokowsky, seconded, seconded by Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions?
I just have one question. For the grass cutting contract, will that free up our folks here to be able to do some more of the maintenance around the buildings, the landscaping, for some of the buildings that look particularly poor?
Yes, that was actually the plan with that contract to grass cutting services, be able to free up more of our groundskeeping time to take care of that.
Okay. All right. And thank you.
And, Mr. D'Azio, to add to that, I think that this past spring, we really, it was a prime example, as it was time for us to make that decision. There was Olympic Day, the rains were fierce, I think it was seven or eight days in a row, and our crew simply couldn't get to everything, and I think a baseball playoff as well. So, feel the administration did a good job of getting the best rate for this.
I would like to quick commend the crew for the great job they did making the field look awesome for graduation. It was the best I've ever seen it. Okay. Moving on then, question, oh, do we have to, we have to vote, right?
We're correct.
Did you have a comment, Terry?
Yeah, I did.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Steve, the chiller maintenance that we are not, that we're recommending no bid on, or no acceptance, is because it narrows it down to one? Right, and the one pricing was just out of line, so we're going to rebid that. Okay. Thank you.
Madam President, who was the motion and second again, please?
I believe it was Mr. Casa, right?
First, Prokowsky and Casa.
Mrs. Prokowsky and Mr. Casa.
Thank you. I had a software glitch. Thank you.
User error.
Put me on the spot, I'm like...
That's what they like to say to me.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of a credit change order for Electrotech for electrical work for the Oak Park HVAC project, the amount of $1,149.20. Approve a $0 change order for Low Bar Incorporated for various ads and deducts at the Montgomery Project. Approve a change order to Micro Mechanical for additional kitchen work on Montgomery Elementary School Project, the amount of $5,147.36. Approve a credit change order, namely RC2 to Weatherproofing Technologies Incorporated for additional works and credits at the Montgomery Project, the amount of $5,713.77. Approve a change order for Weatherproofing Technologies for additional roof work on the Montgomery Project in the amount of $13,226.93. This change order will be backcharged to other prime contractors. And finally, approve a $0 change order to Burrow Electric for various ads and deducts for electrical work performed in the Montgomery Project.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Mrs. G. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the bid awards as presented for June 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mrs. Prokowsky. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of Donna McGrow as a non-member treasurer of the Board of School Directors for the remainder of the 2017-18 school year due to the vacancy created by the resignation of Carol J. Pitts, as well as a one-year term effective July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2019, and the establishment of a bond in the amount of $5,000 with a premium to be paid by the school district. Compensation for duties assigned by the Director of Business Administration shall not exceed $100 per month.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mrs. Prokowsky. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of Dawn Johnston as assistant secretary to the Board of School Directors for a one-year term, effective July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2019, and the establishment of a bond in the amount of $5,000 with a premium to be paid by the school district.
So moved.
Second.
You guys switched up this time. Okay. Motion by Mrs. Prokowsky, seconded by Mr. D'Azio. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the 2018 homestead and farmstead exclusion, as per the attached resolution.
So moved.
Second.
All right, you guys are not allowed to motion anyone.
Somebody else has to be. You didn't kill in the block.
Motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mrs. Prokowsky. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the 2018 real estate tax installment payment plan, as per the attached resolution.
Any...
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mrs. Ramich. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of an increase of 2.35% to the salary and hourly rate schedule of the non-union and confidential support staff for the 2018-19 fiscal year, effective July 1, 2018. The salary and hourly rate schedule of bus drivers and van drivers shall remain the same as for the 17-18 fiscal year.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Ott, seconded by Mr. D'Azio. Does anyone have any comments or questions?
Just one comment, that I understand the reasoning for not giving the bus drivers an increase in their salary this year. However, as a group that tends to be insistent upon data, I would have liked to have seen a study to have gone along with this, to see that we can't get some of these salaries in line with other districts before moving ahead with this. It does seem a little like singling out the bus drivers, in my opinion.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
So, I think the motion still carries, though.
Recommend approval of the Act 93 Compensation Plan for Administrators, including an increase of 3% to the salary schedule for the 2018-19 fiscal year, effective July 1, 2018. Copy of the Act 93 Compensation Plan is on file in the Office of Director of Business Administration.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Was that me, you, Mr. Fusco?
It was me.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mr. D'Azio. Do we have any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion still carries.
Recommend approval of the 2018-19 general insurance package policy, in the amount of $579,364, as per the attached list of annual premiums, three bonds at a cost of $75 each, and camp insurance at a cost of $4,910.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mr. McBean.
Mr. McBean.
Congratulations. Any comments or questions?
Little steps at a time. Good.
Steve, we shop this insurance every year, is that correct?
Well, we have our broker actually get competitive proposals each year, and we did have discussion at the finance committee that we'll be issuing a request for qualifications for a broker for consideration for the 19-20 fiscal year.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? I think the insurance premium is actually down a little bit from last year, is that correct?
It depends which line of coverage. If you take it as a collective, it's actually up about $39,000 in total. Some actually went down and some went up. In particular, the auto coverage was the biggest increase. It was 17% increase in our auto coverage, which includes our school buses.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions?
Let's hope for fewer accidents next year.
Of course. We always hope for no accidents. All right. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the secondary summer school programs for grades seven and eight for 2018.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Ramich and seconded by Mrs. G, I believe. So, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the community education budget for the 2018-19 school year, as per the attached document.
Do I have a motion? Motion by Mrs. Ott?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McBean. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the aquatics budget as part of the community education budget for the 2018-19 school year, as per the attached document.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mrs. Ramich. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the extended school care budget for the 2018-19 school year, as per the attached document.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the school nutrition services budget for the 2018-19 school year, as per the attached document.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Ott, seconded by Mr. McBean. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the breakfast and lunch prices for the school nutrition services for the 2018-19 year at the attached pricing sheets. The pricing represents a 0% increase over the 1718 year.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Romich and seconded by Mrs. Porkowski. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of authorizing the Director of Business Administration to make investments, purchases, expenditures, and other fixed school district obligations such as bids and bid awards of amounts owed under any contracts previously approved by the Board of Directors and/or approved in the 2018-19 district budget. And further recommend approval to authorize the business office to make required budget transfers should they be needed as directed by its local auditors upon completing the audit for the 1718 fiscal year per the attached.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Ott, seconded by Mrs. Porkowski. Any comments or questions?
One question. Does this cover, I just want to make sure we're covered here. If there's a payment that was budgeted in the 1718 school year that's going to get paid after the end of the fiscal year, is that covered by this resolution?
It is, it is. And we actually accrue that back or charge that back to the previous fiscal year. But that's included, yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll say that is the longest list of action items. Yeah, I was like, oh, my gosh. All right, moving on to the finance report. Mr. Scrocky.
Thank you, Madam President. A couple of quick updates before I deliver the Treasurers Report. I do want to mention that, it was mentioned earlier in the Finance Committee report that Carol Pitts has resigned from North Penn School District, so today is her last day. In fact, she's back in the office right now preparing the budget, the 2018-19 budget, submission to the Department of Education in her last act here at North Penn. So I just want to publicly thank Carol for her two years here at North Penn School District. She was a great asset. Second item I have is a state budget update. We should actually have a state budget on time this year. In fact, it should be finalized either tomorrow or Monday at the latest. So that's remarkable news considering it's only June 21 and not December 21 for state approval. So we're quite pleased with that. Were some preliminary numbers floating around today that were circulated in the North Penn School District, we're looking to receive a basic education funding increase of $361,000. That's about a 3.5% increase over the current year. Special education is going up only $36,672. That's 0.6% increase. So both of those figures, if approved in the final budget, will be a slight increase over what we have in the 1819 budget. Also, on budget news, you may have heard that there is a proposal on school safety to provide about $60 million in funding to school districts throughout the Commonwealth. And it looks like right now that funding will be delivered via block grants, not competitive grants, but block grants, which means that basically every school district will receive something. And with those block grants, they've identified 22 possible uses. So it sounds like there's going to be maximum flexibility with respect to using the dollars for school safety. Things like equipment, infrastructure, training, mental health support, all those will be included. So we're looking forward to receiving the final details of that information. Hopefully, that will be sustainable and not just a one-year funding mechanism for school districts. So since I have more information than that, I'll send that out. Also, with tonight's budget approval, just a reminder for our property owners in North Penn School District, tax bills are being prepared right now. They're being proofed, and they will be delivered, hopefully, in everyone's mailbox by July 1 or certainly the first week in July. If you don't receive your bill by the first week in July, please contact your local elected tax collector. Also, as a reminder that, again, with the passage of the budget, the tax rebate program is in full effect starting July 1. This is a program for individuals in North Penn School District that also qualify for the property tax rent rebate program offered by the state. If you meet the North Penn guidelines, it's basically a matter of completing a one-page application and providing documentation, receive a rebate from the state, and then you're also eligible for a rebate at North Penn. And this is, this program is designed for the most needy individuals in the school district. And finally, just a reminder to the board, at your place in your folders is the MCIU ballot for the board members that were elected at last month's meeting. So if you could please complete and sign the ballot and return it to me tonight, I'd appreciate that. In terms of the Treasurers Report, this is for the month of May 2018. Cash receipts for May totaled $6,452,417.51, while disbursements totaled $15,638,927.29, leaving the district with available balance at the end of May of $84.5 million. And that's roughly an $800,000 increase over last year. Any questions on the Treasurers Report? Okay, hearing none, moving on to sanction and approval of invoices. I recommend ratification of disbursements for the month of May totaling $19,156,513.30.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, a motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions for Mr. Scrocky? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Moving on to budget transfers, I recommend approval of the attached budget transfers for the month of April 2018 in the amount of $168,856.50.
Motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And the financial reports were provided. They are linked on board docs. These are typical monthly financial reports. I believe we have 14 various reports, revenue expenditure reports, and bond funds and things like that. That's there for information, no vote is required on that item.
We're not going to go through them all?
I'm certainly would happy if you go through all 14 reports. Actually, there's 16 tonight, so should I start at report number one?
No.
Okay. We'll save that for next month.
You would want to.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's it then, right? Moving on to other business. We have some school board committee assignments since we have our new and hopefully final board member for the year. I'll just run through them. Finance is a committee of the whole, which means that we are all part of the finance committee. Mr. D'Azio will remain the chair. I don't have to read them all? Oh, okay.
I would just make a motion that we approve the revised committee assignments as presented.
Okay. Do I have a motion then? Motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mrs. Porkowski. Do we have any comments or questions?
Do we need to open this for public comment, or was this advertised? It was advertised, correct?
It was advertised.
Yep.
It was advertised. Okay. Seeing no questions then, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Julianne, you didn't have a question, did you? I'm sorry. Okay, I saw you might go on. Okay. All right, so we did promise to have public comment at the end, even though it's not on the agenda, because I know, sorry, you wanted to say something? If you could get up and sign your name and everything, though, please.
And Dr. Dietrich, would you mind after the public comments, since some of the parents were here about class sizes today, can you just let the public know kind of what our processes and timeline?
Do you need me to sign in, or?
We do.
Okay.
Same rules as at the beginning. Thank you.
My question relates to the report that Mr. Fusco did. It was in Section 5, Part E, talking about bullying. How extensive was your report? You said that it was within, well within the guidelines. What type of review did you do to come up with that, to say that the bullying was within the guidelines? I mean, based on all the things that the parents had brought here tonight and have been talking about for several months, was this just strictly talking to like the management of the school, or was this an actual probe?
This is, this is a policy, and it was a review. The state law requires that the bullying policy be reviewed every three years. The policy itself, in compliance with the state, the compliance with the state law refers to the fact that the policy has certain elements that need to be in place. Primarily, and Kyle, help me if I, if I miss something, but primarily related to procedures for reporting, procedures for investigation, and so forth. It is not a policy that addresses consequences for bullying incidents or things of that nature.
That's correct. The only addition is that the state law that requires that policy has not changed since the last time that the policy was, was reviewed by the school district.
So is there a review of, a review of the actual bullying that is being, that is occurring in the schools? It's nice that we have a policy and all, but I'm sure some of those schools out West had a policy that their students weren't supposed to shoot other students. But look what's happening in the world. So I mean, what is really being done behind this? It's great that you've got this policy.
Or can I add something? It has been discovered, okay, through the website on the Department of Education that our school, Walton Farm, has not provided accurate information to the Department of Education. How do we work around that? Because as I understand it, it is the principal's responsibility to do that.
To report up.
We know there have been incidents. There have been incidents last year of theft, bullying, fighting, assault, and none of those have been reported to the Department of Education. How do we follow up on that? We're not within the guidelines of the Department of Education if we're not reporting.
I'm going to have to defer to Dr. Dietrich on that question.
You certainly are welcome to provide any information you believe to be accurate to me, and I'll review that.
It's on the Department of Education website.
Any information you believe you have, you believe to be accurate, I'll review that.
In order to update it, I think he's referring to. In, in regard to the individual situation at Walton Farm, this is a policy that's just district-wide understood. I mean, and it goes through definitions. It does designate who is to be responsible for implementing consequences and investigations and such things. And then generally, those policies are then turned into regulations that, you know, have to be implemented, building to building across the district. So I mean, when we were reviewing the policy, which there were no changes made to it the other night, it was simply because it is in compliance with the law. And it is comprehensive enough that, you know, if there's a breakdown, it's not necessarily at the policy level as much as, you know, we have to look at it from the administration level.
Can I just ask last, I know I'm out of time, but is this publicly available? Is this something that we can take a look at?
Absolutely, yeah. I actually got it in front of me, and I just Googled it, North Penn bullying policy.
All of the policies and regulations are on the website.
It's 5115. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Sir, could you publicly state your name? I don't believe you did so at the beginning.
Frank DiAmato, 1810 Hickory Way in Hatfield, Pennsylvania.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would, without getting too far into the weeds, since this is public comment, but I think it's appropriate to make sure that we highlight what was approved with the budget tonight. There are 21 additional staff, many of them that are related to safe schools and climate, character development, counselors, and at the elementary school level. So it's not just on the policy side, but obviously, we have to make sure that we're executing on the practice. So I just wanted to make sure that was known.
Thank you, Mr. Casa. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. DiAmato. Appreciate you coming up and talking.
Mr. D'Azio, I'd ask that I summarize the process that we use to establish the number of sections regarding the class size. As everyone is well aware, we do have board policy giving us guidelines regarding class sizes, and then each spring, we take a look at the historical information that we have in front of us, and we also look at the enrollment projections that are provided through data we get regarding births for students that are coming into kindergarten. We then approximate, based off of that data, the number of sections needed for each of the schools and each of the grades. As the school year ends then, we alert our teachers and our principals as to the expected number of sections. And then, as the summer goes along, we continue to monitor the actual enrollments.